Good evening. Today is Monday, February 26th at 6:30 PM. And I now call the Wittenwood City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is 2.01 District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts and Introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The first award is the Kiwanis Student of the Month, Amira Adams. Is Amira here? Okay. We're gonna keep going. So when you guys see Amira, let her know we're gonna keep calling her name every month until she shows up. So it doesn't matter. And then we get to the final point after we do it three times, then we just come to her house. All right? Okay. The next one is Elner Morales Diaz, and that's the superintendent's art award winner for January. All right. We have to... Miss Jordan? Miss Jordan?
She wants to know if you want to give her the award.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Miss Jordan, where's his art?
Oh.
Yeah. Is this piece? Yeah. Come on up. So all of our artwork is professionally framed by our partners, Ameritas. So I just wanted to let you guys know, at no fee. So they've been doing framing of our artwork for many, many years. So you get a chance to tell us a little bit about the piece, what inspired you to do it?
It was just an art project, and honestly, when I draw, it's not really like, I don't really have anything in mind. I just draw whatever I see. And I was thinking more, making it more realistic, but I guess my body just wanted to draw it like this.
Wow. I think that area is behind Dr. Johnson's house. I've seen that before. So, yeah, that was some realistic drawing. So who did you bring with you tonight? Mom, come on up for a picture, please. And Mr. Spielman? Yeah. Go further out this way. Further out this way. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 no. That's the good part. That stays with me until you graduate from Wittenwood's. Thank you, sir. Right. That artwork may become famous one day, so we have to hold on to it. The next recipient is, I'd like for Ms. Becky Youngs to come up. And so you guys thought that she was just this incredible color guard person with the flags, but she does so many other things for the district, and we appreciate her. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to call the superintendent award, Rayelle Reed. Is Rayelle here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. And I'd like you to talk a little bit about his piece. Yes, come on up. Rayelle, for some reason, sir, you look like an artist. I'm just saying what I think. Which one? Is it this one? This one. This is the superintendent's selection.
Well, I think Rayelle's piece speaks for itself, but he's pretty amazing. Words cannot describe the talent that our kids have. So Rayelle, if you want to tell us...
Before he does that, before he does that, you said something, "He's pretty amazing." So if I pick that piece, what does that mean?
You're really amazing.
Okay, I'm just checking. Just wanted to check. All right, thanks.
It's a Samurai piece. It's something that I just came up with randomly in my head. There's nothing much that I can say about it. It's myself, as you can see. Yeah, it's me, in a different shade, pink. And, yeah, I was just told to...
What'd you tell us?
I said, just do a self-portrait.
Do a self-portrait and make it like a different shade, or... I forgot, I forget the word for it, but, yeah.
Surrealism.
Surrealism.
So if you look at it up close, you see all these different images taking shape. It's an amazing piece, and I think you did an incredible job.
I'm so proud.
We are all very proud. So what Miss Jordan has done now, because we were just hanging the artwork, all this artwork gets hung in our schools so that we can all enjoy students', you know, incredible work. But what she's done now, she's put a tag on the back of who this artist is and the year when they've done it, so that when the young person graduates, they can get the artwork back and hang it on in their home. So we don't buy artwork from other places, we use our own students' art, and I think that's what makes us exceptional. So it's photo time. Bring your family up. Who came with you?
Mom, my little sister, and my grandmother.
All right. Come on. So we ask this question all the time, who inspires you? Which one of these incredible people inspire you to be the artist that you are?
My mother, my little sister.
Okay, fantastic.
Take a step forward, sir. Very good.
Come on, quit hiding.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Right here for the next person. Israel. Yes. So I didn't want to butcher your first name, so tell us your first name.
Zakia.
Zakia, okay, very nice. It's spelled really interesting on this paper, so... All right, so this is the principal's art selection, and the principal selected the piece, and here we go. Is it this?
No.
Incredible artist.
Well, the inspiration for this piece was one of Picasso's sold at auction at South Bay's for $140 million. So I said, why not us? And the name of the project was Who Wants to be a Millionaire? And so Picasso did his famous girlfriend, but they had their choice, and so Zakia, who'd you choose?
I drew myself, so we had a choice to draw famous artists or ourselves, and I just wanted to draw myself, so that's what I did.
If you stick with me, you will be famous, I can tell you. So we're partners now, right?
I love it, I love it.
Yeah, and so Ms. Becky wanted us to use principles of elements and design, so, and also, we couldn't be very symmetrical, so that's why there's the big dip in it, because I didn't want it to be the same. And there's a lot of asymmetrical stuff going on, and also principles of design, like pattern, and repetition, so, yeah.
So our artists, our artists get the opportunity. It's not just art, it's science, it's math, it's a variety of things. And you have to have an incredible teacher in order to teach incredible kids, so I think that Ms. Becky Youngs has done an incredible job. And you can see the artwork looks absolutely fabulous. So family members, come on up.
Are you a soccer player?
Zakia, are you a soccer player?
No, I play volleyball.
Oh, this is a volleyball, okay. I had it wrong, thank you. That's amazing. Right there.
Oh, yeah.
The next student is an honorable mention student, Angkorbel Blevins.
That's it?
It's your art. So you want to tell them what it is, what we're doing here? Okay, face the people. So, do you want me to start? You want to start?
You start.
Okay, so this project is for the Environmental Society and Forest Park. Wright Glenn runs that. And so every year, we work on endangered species. And a lot of my students that are here are working on endangered species now, but this was Cory's interpretation of her endangered species, so take it from there, tell them what you used, et cetera.
Well, I used charcoal pencils. Charcoal pencils? I kind of just, like, I don't really know what to say. I just used my mind and my creativity, and I created that, so...
And the work speaks for itself. Good job. And this one will be framed as well.
Oh, okay, cool.
Good job.
Oh, a picture.
Miss Becky, they also have medallions.
Oh, cool, okay.
Do you have family members? Did you bring family with you?
Yes.
All right, come on up.
Do you want the medallion on her picture, please?
Yeah, that'll be good.
I feel like we're at the Olympics now, guys. We're gonna go top of the line.
The other students have medallions as well.
Superintendent, do you want to give the other, have the other recipients come up and collect their medallions as well?
They're gonna be up again for the next...
Oh, they're up again.
Okay, well, they're up again.
There's more.
Someone that can't draw a stick figure, I am impressed, I am impressed.
Okay, the next award is for the Kiwanis Character's Key Citizenship Award, and this goes to Michelle Fordor. So this is what your counselor writes about you. So stand there and look beautiful. All right. "There's no more deserving of the honor of this month's Student of the Month of citizenship than Michelle. Michelle's academic records speak for itself. She earns top grades in a demanding course load that includes a variety of honors and college courses. What really makes Michelle special, though, is her commitment to making Wittenwood's a better place. Michelle is a member of Student Council and the National Honor Society. She has taken on leadership roles as an officer in each of these clubs. Through her work in these groups, she has been a key contributor to such projects as School Uniform Drive and fundraising for other activities. Michelle is also a student aide for the Career Center. She and some friends took it upon themselves to create a college acceptance bulletin board in the hallway to display the accomplishments of our proud students and increase the college-going culture at the high school. Michelle is not afraid to take action if she sees an opportunity for improvement. This is why Michelle deserves to be Student of the Month." Have you guys seen that board? Anybody seen it? It's absolutely amazing. Usually you'll have a college board like that, and it really pops out in May, but they produce this thing early. Of all the acceptance letters and awards that students have received, and that board is absolutely full. So congratulations for all your hard work. So go to the mic and tell us a little bit about yourself.
I didn't expect to speak, but I guess after high school, I'll be attending the University of Kentucky, majoring in either biology or neuroscience. Most likely gonna take the pre-medicine track, and from there, let's see where it takes me.
Okay, Kiwanis Student of the Month award goes to Kimmy Bob Perez. So Kimmy Bob Perez first attended Wittenwood High School in August 2023. She has demonstrated significant growth in her English language acquisition in a short period of time. Her teachers constantly praise her as she excels in the classroom and constantly assist her peers. Kimmy hopes to join the volleyball team this year. She is also the first ESL student to join a group of high school students as student mentors to sixth graders on the South Campus. She is a positive role model for all of her peers. The Kiwanis Student of the Month award is sponsored by the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, a partner of Wittenwood City Schools. Students who are honored receive a La Rosa's gift card. All right, congratulations. Family? When I saw the little girl in a beautiful dress, I thought she was getting the award. Awesome. Coach Steel, can you come up, please? So the next award is the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, and it goes to Ariana Thomas. Ariana Thomas has been a Wittenwood student athlete for the past two years. She started as the team's point guard for the eighth grade girls' basketball program. Ariana has been an eighth grade starter since her seventh grade year of middle school. She has led the team in assists and is currently second in scoring average of 10 points a game. Ariana not only excels in the court but thrives academically. She has recently won the Faces of Strength Award. This is an award for any student that exemplifies character strengths daily. She is committed to being a leader to her peers, displays social intelligence towards faculty and staff, uses her critical thinking skills to find new ways to be creative, and is one of the most humble human beings you could ever encounter. Ariana is part of the National Junior Honor Society and is a high honor roll student. Her resilience to push through adversity and still manage to exceed everyone's expectations academically is truly a sight to see. Her willingness to lead and operate in a spirit of grace and compassion for others speaks towards her upbringing. Ariana is the daughter of Emma and Dart Thomas, and is the oldest sibling of three. She holds herself and her teammates to a high standard, understanding anything worth having doesn't come easy. She is fully committed to her academic studies and curricular activities. She has been a national basketball champion with the Lady Future Basketball Program for the last six years, and is currently in the Women's Basketball Hall of Fame located in Nashville, Tennessee. That's pretty amazing. All right. That's just amazing. That's all I can say. All right, so Coach Steel, can you tell us a little bit about her? I read this...
I was gonna say, I actually wrote that, so I feel like I've said everything. Ariana, I've known Ariana since she was actually, how old, four? Four years old. So she's more than just a student athlete to me, she's also family. She carries herself, like I said, at a high standard. She carries herself with grace, and she's compassionate to others. She exemplifies leadership daily, and she's just an awesome human being to be around, so I am so proud of her, and she is well, well deserving of this award.
So, one more thing. Coach Steel, how did the girls' eighth grade team do this year?
So we are back-to-back all-ECC champions this year.
Ariana, you want to say anything?
I don't know really what to say, but I'm just thankful for this award, and everybody that supports me, and, yeah.
I don't know if you guys can feel it, I can feel a McDonald's All-American coming into shape. So who did you bring with you?
My coach, I...
Okay, anybody else?
Uh-uh.
Okay, all right. Let's get some pictures. She wants a picture with you. She wants a picture with me? They all do, but I'll take it. Thank you.
Powerful little package you are.
You know, on that court, I bet you...
Yes, fierce.
You know, you've seen kids, they're this nice kid, but on the court, they're just like different.
Whole demeanor changes.
Yes. All right. The next award goes to, this guy is absolutely incredible. I've seen him work with kids and give them everything that he has every single day, and I mean every single day. And I'd like to have Mr. Hadeah come up. So in order to have great kids, you have to have great teachers, right?
That's right.
So Wittenwood's Middle School is proud to nominate Mr. Mark Hadeah, Skyline Teacher of the Month. Mr. Hadeah is a veteran Wittenwood City School employee who has excelled in the classroom as an ELA teacher, and also at the intermediate school, and a social studies teacher at the middle school. Along with his co-teacher, his exemplary execution of project-based learning, culturally-responsive practice, and PBS best practices create a learning environment that is safe and motivating to all students. As department facilitator, his dedicated positive leadership creates a culture of growth and accountability in the social studies department. He leads by example, keeping students and data in the forefront of his actions and decisions. He clearly communicates and reinforces the district's high expectations to his department, students and families. And finally, Mr. Hadeah embodies the warrior way of trust, respect, and responsibility, and is an excellent candidate for the Skyline Teacher of the Month. Thank you, sir. Awesome.
Congratulations again. Congratulations. Yeah, I'll be really short, but I've had the opportunity, thank you, Superintendent and Board, appreciate it, Ms. Vincent and Mr. Dixon. But I've been fortunate to work throughout this district over the last 11 years. I worked in technology for a couple summers. I've coached baseball at the high school, taught at the middle school, taught at the intermediate school, and the district is full of amazing people, amazing educators, and outside of that, it's a community that I just love. Been, again, been here for 11 years, and just, I love it. We go to church here in Forest Park, and it's just a place that I really enjoy being. And again, Mr. Dixon told me about it, and I was like, I feel like there are so many other people that deserve this before me, because there's just been so many people that have been so good to me and so good to our students. Administrators that have really great hearts, and people that want the best for students. So really appreciate it. If there's anything good in me, it's God working through me, so I appreciate this and appreciate you all, so thank you.
Before you take your seat, the administrator who wrote kind but true words about you, I'd like to have Ms. Lee Vincent come up as well. This next recognition totally caught me by surprise, but it's a recognition that I know you guys would love to hear about. So the University of Cincinnati Pre-Med Program, and Gabriel, come up, come up. So I happened to be in the high school the one day, and he came in with Mr. Martin and gave us great news, and Ms. Jackson took pictures, and I'm gonna read a little bit of why we thought it was important for him to get this award. "Congratulations to high school Gabriel, who has accepted into the University of Cincinnati's Pre-Med Program. As stated on the university's website, unlike other pre-med options, UC's Pre-Med track with a Health Sciences major gives you a hands-on undergraduate experience where you can gain direct patient care experiences through service learning and research opportunities in some of the top healthcare facilities, learning alongside other allied health professions, and develop a strong foundational understanding through active labs." Gabriel, thank you. So Gabriel's story is just, it's emotional, and so would you share a little bit with us?
So my story tracks back to about four years ago, when my mom in here, she was diagnosed with stage-two breast cancer, stage-three almost, I believe, and something about that just lit a fire in me, saying, I think it's time to give back to the people that need it. People who went through the same thing she did, people who experienced all that. I just feel like going down that track, I can change the world in helping people like her, brave woman like her. She, actually, I'll put this out, she recently just completed her full journey. She went through the last successful surgery, it went well, and I'm very proud that I have such a brave woman around me every day. It's wonderful to have her around. But I just feel like going to be a doctor, going to help people, is just what I was made to do, something that I feel like will give back to not only the community but the world. So I just, honestly, it's a great feeling to know that I'm gonna do something that'll help everyone.
While Gabriel's still standing up there, I'd like for the audience to repeat after me. Stand back up, Ma. Repeat after me. We have...
We have...
...amazing...
Amazing.
...students...
Students.
...at Wittenwood City Schools.
At Wittenwood City Schools.
All right, very good.
Yes, thank you.
The next award is the Creative Spirit Award, and I know that, I took a step through, Ms. Becky Young, so that we can do these, and then I'll bring your kids back, okay? Because I want you to talk about them.
She went through the last successful surgery. It went well and I'm very proud that I have such a brave woman around me every day. It's wonderful to have her around. But I just feel like going to be a doctor, going to help people is just what I was made to do, something that I feel like will give back to not only the community but the world. So I just honestly, it's a great feeling to know that I'm going to do something that'll help everyone.
While Gabriel's still standing up there, I'd like for the audience to repeat after me. Stand back up, Ma. Repeat after me. We have...
We have...
Amazing...
Amazing.
Students...
Students.
At Wynton Woods City Schools.
At Wynton Woods City Schools.
All right, very good. The next award is the Creative Spirit Award. And I know that I took a step through Ms. Becky Young so that we can do these and then I'll bring your kids back, okay? Because I want you to talk about them. But there's a Creative Spirit Award and it actually goes to our new Chief of Police, who's not here tonight, but he's going to come back next month. And one of the things that he came to me and he said, Superintendent, the relationship that young people have with the police sometimes is awkward because they think the police is one thing when they're really there to support everyone. So he came up with a plan in the South Campus where periodically the police will come in, visit, see how kids are doing, read to them, have conversations with them, and not there for the arrest, but there for the relationships and the camaraderie. We need to build our community that way and I appreciate the new chief stepping out there to do something like that. So when you guys see him, let him know that we have an award for him and we'll present that award in March. The next award is for gifts from Ms. Spielman. Can you come up, please? Ms. Marlene Spielman? So if you think the name is kind of familiar, she is the boss of Mr. Bill Spielman. All right, just thought I'd just let you know. All right, I'm just telling you. When I interviewed her back there, that's what she told me she was. All right. Ms. Marlene Spielman provided weekly donations of snacks and drinks to support the Wynton Woods High School Football Program valued at close to $5,000. So thank you. Yeah, you could take a picture with her, sir. Go on. Fantastic. All right. And we're going to award Mr. and Mrs. Wolf at the next month's meeting. They couldn't be here tonight, but Mr. Spielman said he would do everything in his power to get them to show up. All right. So the Forest Park Environmental Association Art Contest and the TAF Museum of Art Reaching Classroom and the Teen Art Expo. Come up and talk about it.
So our kids have their artwork everywhere.
This is being recorded, so the mic.
Okay. And sometimes it's hard to keep it straight, but it really isn't because as you can see, we have great kids and we have so many talented kids and all different things that they do. So we have three. The Forest Park Environmental Competition, so one of my students won that last year. And so he'll come up. And then that was $100, yay. And you can go over to the Forest Park Community Building and see his artwork. Then we got accepted to the Artist Reaching Classrooms, which is a competition in the city. And five, is it five? Yeah, five of my students have their artwork down at the Pendleton in the Annex Gallery. So if you ever go to Final Fridays down at the Pendleton, which is really great and you see all the amazing artists in Cincinnati, five of our students have their artwork on display and they're here tonight. And Rayel won the prize for the show, so he got some cash. He won first place. And then there's one. And then we have the Teen Art Expo and that opens in March. And one of our, well, two of our students are in that. That's going to open at the Cincinnati Art Museum, so how cool to have your artwork at a museum. So there's a whole bunch of students, so.
Yeah, keep going.
All right.
As long as you finish by 10:00 tonight, it's good.
And then, no. Okay, so Isaiah Dawson, come on down. And he is for the environmental. And you can stay here because you have another one, okay? So just stay right up here. Right up here, come on. And then Naomi Kelly, why don't you come on down? There's Naomi. And then Artist Reaching Classrooms, Rayel Reed. Ashley Giron. Cory Blevins. Isaiah Dawson. And Naomi Kelly.
So one of the reasons we decided to bring the artwork back to board meetings, number one, so that you could see the rich talent of all of our students. And the great idea to bring the art back, because COVID came and we weren't having students in person, and I think that I have the best administrative assistant in the entire world. Because she said, Superintendent, we need to bring the art back so that people can recognize and see the talent that we have in our children. And Ms. Jordan, thank you for coming up with the idea. All right, Madam President.
Thank you. I am, after my little tissue, I am just at awe again of how wonderful our students are and congratulations. This is on script for all of your hard work and thank you for taking the time out to come so we can celebrate you. So our next item on the agenda is 3.01. We will now take a five-minute recess. Thank you. We're back in session. The next item on the agenda is 4.01, Public Comments, Mr. Seymour. So we have one. Is that correct?
I don't have any more.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, please take the board.
I'll be your timekeeper.
Thank you. Do we have three minutes? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Janetta Thomas. I have two daughters here in the district. My oldest, she's in ninth grade and then my youngest is second grade and she does receive special education services. So I'm here more so as a squeaky wheel. I've been here before, just talking more to advocate for the needs for my daughter. I have been told that, you know, the Special Education Department, students within that department are only 16% of the district, in which I do understand that we can't focus all of our attention on that small amount, again, is what I've been told. But my ask is, I know that we are in a season of change with a lot of new members and coming and going. And so as we go forward, to continue to look for ways to include the children within the Special Education Department in media, activities, clubs, sporting, whatever it is that we can do just to kind of remember the children with disabilities. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 5.01. Do we have a representative from WWTA?
The OPEC rep will not, oh, oh, sir, I'm C, I'm sorry.
The next item on the agenda is 5.02, OPEC Representative. Thank you for being here.
She told me a distinguished gentleman was coming tonight, so.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dante Dukes, Vice President of OPEC. We have nothing to report. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dukes.
We love those reports there.
The next item on the agenda is 6.01, To Waive the Reading of Minutes as Presented. A motion is in order?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes for the regular meeting on December 11th, 2023, the special meeting on December 18th, 2023, and the regular meeting on January 22nd, 2024, and finally, the regular meeting on February 12th, 2024.
But I believe I'll have to bring December 18th back, right?
Correct.
So should I remove that from this list? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that correction, Board of, has been motioned and seconded? Mr. Seymour, can you call the vote?
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson. Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 6.02, To Approve the...
Oh, actually, it's on here twice. I'm not really sure why.
Yes. So 6.02, To Approve the Minutes as Presented.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on December the 11th, the regular meeting on January 22nd, 2024, and the regular meeting on February 12th, 2024 as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you, Mr. Spielman. It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, can you call for the vote?
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, Investments. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, as you see, for your summary of your financials through January of 2024, the general fund had year-to-date revenues of $30.5 million. Our month-to-date revenues were about $2.9 million. Most of that was real estate taxes and approximately $1.9 million in state foundation funding. Our expenditures in the general fund through the year-to-date are currently at $32.2 million and we're running, still running approximately 4% under budget or $2.4 million. And most of you probably realized that the benefits were up by about $575,000. And as you recall, January is the month in which we make our health savings contribution to our high deductible healthcare plan. As you recall, the board donates 50% into their health savings account and our family plan currently has a $6,250 upfront deductible. And all the funds had approximately $32.8 million and all the funds are listed for you with their current unencumbered cash balance.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
Those would be submitted for audit.
For audit. Oh, sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
Review the financial statements. I got ahead of myself. Thank you very much. Next is 8.01, Investments. Mr. Seymour?
Yes, the investments for the month of January, we had approximately $29 million invested. We earned $126,237. Of that, the general fund was $111,000 and the building fund was right around $15,000.
Thank you. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, Resolution to Authorize Filing a Board of Revision Complaint.
Yes, as you recall, the requirements for filing Board of Revision Complaints changed beginning last year and we currently only file when we notice there's a sale of commercial property. And I'm asking the board's permission to file a counter complaint for the Meadow Apartments Building, which is currently valued at approximately $1.1 million but sold for $4.8 million. And I would be filing a complaint to ask the auditor to appraise it at the sales, transaction sales price.
Thank you. There's a motion needed?
Madam President, I move we approve the resolution, resolution to authorize the filing of Board of Revision Complaint as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to mention real quick, Mr. Seymour mentioned that the property was sold for $4.8 million. The resolution actually says $5.8 million, so I just want that to be on record.
My apologies. That's right. That's right.
I just want to make sure it's on record correctly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just one other point for our audience. Mr. Seymour, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we're doing this is to make sure that we get the appropriate taxes with the new appraisal, the new sale price, correct?
Correct. We would only typically, I only, I used to always file only on sales of commercial properties and now I have to bring to the board to get permission in order to do that. And actually, our law firm actually handles that for us now with the, you must be represented by legal counsel now to do it.
Also, Mr. Seymour, in a board docs, make sure that correction is made.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.03, Voucher Joiner Resolution. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
What we're basically, what we have done for the last several years as we've been part of equity and adequacy state funding to support the initiative around the state of Ohio to not support vouchers. Approximately two years ago, as you know, they formed a coalition and formed a lawsuit against, school districts formed a lawsuit, what am I trying to say? A consortium of sorts. And that went from $0.50 per student to $2 a student. And when that started, they requested that we get the board's resolution to continue to fund that at $2 per pupil. We've, I've done that with prior boards for the last two years, but since we had two new board members, I thought it would be best to bring it back to make sure that all board members are still, support the Wynton Woods being part of that coalition. And it runs the district, it's $2 per pupil, which is approximately, it's our funding enrollment, which is right around $3,800 and it would be around $7,600. But I'd like to point out that a K through eight voucher is $6,100 and a nine through 12 voucher is $8,400. And I'm asking for $2 per pupil for a total of $7,800, providing the board wants to still be part of that coalition.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Voucher Joiner Resolution as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to thank the treasurer for bringing this up, especially for Angel and I. Thank you.
I just want to be clear that this, from my understanding, this is the coalition to, that we're, that our district is now going to be a part of or continue to be a part of, to kind of, I guess, fight against, for lack of a better word, against the...
Mrs. Knighton, it's actually in support of vouchers hurt Ohio.
Say that one more time.
It's in support of vouchers hurt Ohio.
Okay.
So you'll see some of these things that I'll send to you periodically and those are all the legislative reports and how the attorneys are fighting this process.
And that's what I was getting at is just, I want to make sure I was understanding this correctly, so. Thank you.
Mr. Seymour, I do see a correction of the date. It says February, okay, so that's, we met, okay, never mind. Well, no, the, it says 23 in the document. It needs to say 24.
I'm like... February 26, 23.
23.
Are you in the resolution itself?
Yes.
Yes, and it says 23 at the top.
All right, I can fix that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't actually send it to anyone. I can correct it and upload it.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm just burning mine this afternoon though.
Any further discussion? Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Excellent proofreading tonight. Excellent. Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
All right, the vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.04, Resolution Approving Expenditure as a Public, Proper Public Purpose for Students Attending Miami University Early College Academy Program. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, we're asking, and I'll let Mr. Smith comment further on this, we're asking you to declare that the purchase of meals for students attending our college... We're asking you to declare that the purchase of meals for students attending our college credit plus program at Miami University is considered, uh, a public purpose, um, uh, because of our socioeconomic status, and we just felt it was the thing- right thing to do. I understand that the vendor that provides the meal program at Miami University will not honor free and reduced, and will not file the proper documentation to- to do that, and their prior vendor did. So, and I- Mr. Smith may want to comment more.
Yeah, this was a, uh, being on a college campus and having that epidemic exposure, I think the exposure's not just in the classroom, it's in the cafeteria, it's everywhere. And, uh, Miami was- was gracious enough to provide a refrigerator, but we have, uh, there are students there from Middletown, the Regular University, and also Hamilton, that would all just kind of put all their lunches in. It just didn't feel right to us. And so, if you're going to have that college experience, we want you to have that real college experience. And we found that we could actually do a, uh, resolution, making sure that the students were being able to receive a nutritious meal. The other thing, some students have made some decisions because they wouldn't accept free and reduced lunch, so they didn't get a meal. We didn't know about it until later. But a lot of those students participate in activities after school. So if you don't have a student that's getting a well-balanced meal, and now you're on that soccer field or that football field, that could pose a problem for the district. So, uh, Mr. Seymour started doing some research, and there's a resolution that kind of, uh, mirrors what happens with college credit plus. And so it is an acceptable expenditure.
Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, approving the expenditure for students enrolled in Miami University Early College Acad- Academia Program as presented.
I'll second. I'll second it.
You second. Thank you.
Discussion? Any questions or discussion?
I would just like to say I- I appreciate, um, you know, uh, the research that went into this to make sure that our students do get a, um, meal, uh, while they're on the college campus, because like you say, it's just- it's more than just taking classes on the college campus. It's having the full college experience, and if they're embarrassed about not being able to-
Correct.
Go to the cafeteria or whatever-
Yeah.
Then that could, you know, sully the whole thing, you know, the whole experience.
And then all of a sudden you have students not wanting to attend classes.
Right, exactly.
And it starts turning into something else.
Yes, exactly. It's sully the whole experience. So, thank you for that.
I would just like to, um, say I'm going to abstain from voting on this, um, just because my son is a participant in the Miami Early College Academy, so I- I'm not going to vote on this.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Sure. Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton? Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay. Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes three a's and one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. But the next item on the agenda is nine point oh one, school reports. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Drew? We're only going to talk about one report. Mr. Denny, you forgot to tell her? As a- as a- as a- as a consequence- As a consequence, I should have you give the facilities update, Drew, just because he did that. But all you- all I need you to do is just talk to a little bit about the showcase while we change the name, so you don't even need to plug in unless you have to. I don't want you to blow a fuse.
Yeah, it's probably-
That's harder to get back there.
Thanks for catching that. I'm glad I didn't send it anywhere yet.
Like the intermission?
That's not this one. No, you're just going to give an overview of the celebration of excellence.
And so this-
Yes.
I thought you wanted me to show that you see C.
No, that'll come up next.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, showcase of excellence is happening on March seventh at the South Campus for grades kindergarten through sixth grade. And then on March fourteenth, it's happening at the North Campus for grades seven through twelve. So, it'll be a student project presentation night. There'll be music, there'll be artwork, and there'll be students presenting the- their best projects from their- the academic year. So that is what the showcase of excellence it is. It's all about academic out- excellence. So we're looking forward to everyone showing up. It's always a very popular event. It's actually the spotlight event of the year. So, we're really excited, and this is a new theme, so. This was previously known as the Night of Freedom. Now it's the Showcase of Excellence, so I'm sure as the years go, this theme will develop. But overall, look forward to seeing some amazing things.
And yeah, the other- the other really good thing, first of all, thank you for being so prepared to deliver that, Drew. All right. But I think the one thing, the, uh, celebration of excellence, the Night of Freedom didn't really fit our theme anymore. So we did something different. And, um, Drew's also stepped up a little bit different. If you see some of the yard signs out talking about the, uh, celebration of excellence, so she went to the next level. A lot of people in the community say we don't know about the events, so we are trying to hit people with every way of- of- of doing it that we can. Uh, from social media to private signs in front of homes, in front of schools, and- and all of that. So, all right.
Um, for the South Campus, on March seventh, the time is five to seven P M. And then for March fourteenth, for grades seven through twelve at the North Campus, it's five-thirty to seven-thirty P M.
I suggest you come early because it will be crowded. Okay, all right.
Is it an event where you stroll through the school?
Yes, so students will be present at different times. Sometimes they'll be performing, or they'll be near artwork. It's more of an open house. So I'm sure parents will be near their students, but also it's an opportunity for students to see artwork and presentations from their peers and other grade levels as well.
Thank you.
It's somewhat amazing, too, to have the students kind of talk about their projects if you- as you walk around, and they talk about their projects and wa- their why, you know, why they picked that subject.
And they are proud.
And they're very proud to present and to tell you a little bit about, and- and since it's project-based, it usually combines two or three disciplines.
Yeah.
You know, so it's just really exciting to- to see, you know, those that might go down the science and math path, or, you know, down the literature path, or however they, you know, see to do their projects.
Schools all across the- the state have had science fairs, but this is totally different.
Totally different. It's next level.
Totally different environment, yes. Very good.
Better than a science fair.
Thank you. Mr. Denny?
All right, thank you.
So we're moving on to, um, Superintendent Smith, just for clarification, we're moving to nine point oh three, facilities update.
No, we're going to actually do nine point zero two T- uh, T one.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
So you can do the T one.
Yeah, thank- thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, board. You should have before you, uh, three reports or three PDFs attached to that agenda item. Uh, the first would be pupils by service type, uh, and these are all the T reports for, uh, state reporting that the district does. It's tied to funding for the district. Uh, so you should have pupils by service type, and then also miles per day, daily miles by- by service type. And then also, uh, uh, just a trend report that, uh, I put together that tracks the type of, um, pupil service, um, categories and the numbers for those, uh, on an annual basis. And that report, uh, goes back to two thousand nine. So happy to entertain any questions you might have, but, uh, this is just sharing information, I guess by way of just observation. The district, uh, transportation fleet and drivers transported two thousand seven hundred one students this year. Um, it's down slightly from last year, but still fairly high in the history, or lo- you know, the longitudinal view of the data in the district. Um, it's about four percent less than last year, uh, but still fairly high.
But it's over fifty percent. It's past fifty percent of the overall district.
Yes.
By- by a- a margin.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, miles per day, uh, the fleet, if you take that number, three thousand four hundred eleven miles per day, times one hundred and eighty school days, you get, uh, six hundred thousand, six hundred and thirteen thousand, almost six hundred fourteen thousand miles, which is enough to go to the moon and back two and a half times. So, in a district our size, that's, you know, y'all know I'm a recovering math teacher, so. But anyway, there- the- the- the numbers are very healthy. Our district remains very efficient, and, uh, you know, we're- we're proud of our fleet and our drivers and- and how it's managed, so.
Yeah, just make sure you specify that we didn't say we were going to the moon and back. We- this is just a report.
Just-
Okay.
Just to encapsulate how much- how many miles. Yeah, air gets a little thin.
I'm always very proud to see that our, uh, we own our own fleet, you know, and that we do, you know, a fairly good job of keeping it maintenance and-
Yes, ma'am.
Up- up to date, and so I'm always very proud to see that, because that means we own the driver, well, not the drivers, but the- the vehicles that are picking up our children, and we know that they're safe.
Absolutely.
You know, so.
Right, and our mechanics, to your point, do a really good job. We have two excellent mechanics, and they are worth every penny that we- that the district pays and invests in them.
How many buses are in the fleet, just out of curiosity?
Forty-two. And that's actually in that report. You can see there's forty-two total buses and fourteen spares, so when a bus breaks down or is off the road, or for, you know, for inspection, then we have fourteen spares that can cycle in.
Oh, I see.
The average age of the fleet, the frontline fleet, is a little under nine years old, which is really good by state standards. The average is almost ten, so we're- we have a good average age on the fleet. The sub-age is older, but that's why they're subs.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is nine point oh three, facilities update. Mr. Denny, you're up again.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Bryant, and again, board, good evening. Happy to be able to report that the project continues at the intermediate school, uh, at a good pace. Uh, we have some photos to share, uh, so Drew, thank you for- for branching out. Um, yeah, it's looking a little different. So, uh, the first photo, Drew, if you could go back one, yeah, that's the gymnasium, so, um, phase one is about ninety-eight percent complete by billing. Phase two is right at fifty percent complete by billing, but you start to see in certain areas, like that's very close to one hundred percent done. That is the Future Health Center. Uh, so as you walk in the main entry of the building, that's immediately to the right, will have its own separate entrance, similar to what you walked past here when you came into the South Campus. And of course, that's the vision and the dream, is to have something like that at that location as well. Um, so you can see the gym. They've actually hung lights, so there's new LED efficient, uh, bright, much brighter, about two and a half times as bright as the- the T-eight fluorescents that used to be there. Um, and the floor is obviously need to- needs to be cleaned, but it's- it's a construction project in process, but. So it's the paint- the paint's been done, the ceiling's been painted, um, all the walls have been painted. And again, that's- that's how a typical classroom will look as well, in a lot of ways. Because you'll see the similar flooring that you have here, and that's by design, so you'll have the LVT, uh, wide plank flooring, and, uh, as many windows as we can- we can have as well. And those are the new windows and window frames and doors and door frames that phase one and the S R dollars were able to provide.
Mr. Denny?
Yes.
So that exit in the, um, health center, so that's the entrance and exit from the outside, so families don't have to go into the building to access care?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. In fact, if you proceed into the main entry, that- that will become a secure vestibule. So it would be actually fairly difficult for them to- to make it around, um, is- and that's by design as well. So we'd have the same type of secure entry, which is considered best practice for security safety for schools, where you've got what they call a Sally Port, or a- or a secure vestibule, just like we have at this building and at North Campus.
I know in the budget, we couldn't afford the garage doors that we- I know, we- we kept thinking about that.
Yes.
But what's that, uh, that ex- that other space, what does it look like? Do you have any pictures of that?
We do. The cafeteria space?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Drew, if you could flip forward one. So the picture in the middle is actually the cafeteria repainted. So it's the, uh, I don't know if you can tell, the lighting's not- they don't have the LED lights in yet, but that's the- that's the old cafeteria, which in the new design is going to be called a l- a large motor room, so it's- could be an indoor play space, it could be, uh, uh, extra support for students with disabilities like OTPT, occupational therapy, uh, physical therapy. Um, it could be, um, just, uh, honestly, anytime, uh, the- the class might have large motor activities, so it's a nice supplement to P E. Uh, it can serve as a cafeteria if need be. This is also the- the home of our future board meetings, where the seating would be like this, but arrayed that way toward the blue wall, and it would face the stage. I know you can't see the stage in that photo, but if you can picture that. Or it can flip, but there were very large capacity board meeting, it could face the gym, and the gym is on the other side as a two-way stage. So that is, uh, a work in progress. There's a lot of things being stored in there as we move things around, but-
Yeah, and that- and that fine motor room, I- I don't think we have the ability to tell kids that it's raining or snowing, so you can't play today. So we said we do what we have to do.
Swing space kind of.
And it's optional, and so we've made sure that that play is always available and always there. Uh, you know, telling kids you can't go out today just kind of defeats the purpose.
Yeah, exercise and recess is so important.
Mr. Denny, what happened to the-
Helps- it helps that next teacher.
Yes, it does.
I can tell you that.
What happened to the signs that were in the old building? All of those really neat old signs?
I believe they were placed off to the side, but I'll have to double check on that.
Placed off to the side.
They were taken down to be painted.
Bronze.
We'll have to chase them down. They were hanging signs like-
G for garbage, don't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to archive them.
That was- that was-
I sensed there was a lot of love for those signs.
Maybe there's a place for them in the white building.
Okay, all right, keep going, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
It's historical.
They certainly are.
Can you keep going with the report, sir?
So this last set of slides is, uh, looking down a typical hallway. And then you can see, that's the aluminum stud construction that you can see going on there, where they're subdividing a room into other rooms, and so there'll be some drywall, similar to what you see here, where you've got a lot of C M U block wall, but you've also got some drywall, uh, in there as well, so. Uh, it's coming along. There's a lot of overhead work. They're starting to work on drop ceiling, putting in grid and things of that nature. The cabling is going on.
Exciting.
It is. It's- it's really coming together, like it's, uh, it's come a long way even in the last couple of months, so. Yeah, phase two is fifty percent complete done by billing, but I think it's probably closer to sixty percent complete by actual work completed.
Is that in December? Yeah. It's come a long way since December, when we- we did a tour in December.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, it, you know, I- I know you probably can't see it, but all the piping, all the- all the, uh, wiring, everything in the building is new.
Yeah, yeah.
Because mixing and matching it, you know, it's just a matter of time. You know, seeing Mr. Spielman as the acro- you- you blow fuses, you blow circuit. It won't work for you, and then you'll have to tear into the walls to repair.
Yeah, then you'll have to take out all the walls.
We didn't go short on it. We went- we went fun. Absolutely.
Yeah, the goal was to make it a fifty-year fix, like these buildings. Expect to try to get another fifty years out of that facility.
So when you guys are sitting here fifty years from now talking about the building, I think it'll just be amazing. Yeah, all right, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, maybe. Bill says- he's got the appetite.
Keep the same seats, too.
All right, the next item on the agenda is nine point oh four, first read of new and revised board policies. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, the recommendation is to approve the second read, revised policies, and I know you guys read them, but I'm going to go over each one just by policy number and the title. So the first one was policy, this is a revision policy, zero one four, one point two, which is bylaws.
New, I'm- I'm lost, I'm sorry.
These are to approve the se- oh, I'm sorry.
No, yes, nine point oh four.
I'm excited, sorry.
It's the first read.
Nine point zero four. I'm trying to get you guys to vote on something. All right, nine point zero four, thank you, Doc. The, uh, fifty-three thirty-seven students, care of students with active seizure disorders. Fifty-three thirty, these are all first reads, use of medication. Sixty-seven hundred, fair labor standards. Seventy-four forty, operations facility security. Eighty-one twenty, operations volunteers, and eighty-two ten, school calendar. And finally, sixty-two forty, board of revision complaints and counter complaints. So, board, these are all first reads, and, uh, there'll be a conversation if needed to get you to, uh, vote on it and- and approve these policies at the next meeting in March.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh one, personnel schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you, you have schedules A, B, C, D, E, and this month, uh, there is a schedule M. Uh, so, uh, I respectfully request that you approve the schedules as presented.
Ms. Wilson, because there are, um, viewers listening, can you give the title of each schedule, you and I?
Schedule A, uh, resignations. Schedule B is, uh, uh, certificated staff, schedule C is support staff, schedule D supplemental, schedule E leaves, and schedule M are, uh, terminations.
Thank you.
Board, a motion is in order?
Madam Pres, go ahead, okay, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
It's been motioned second, it's been motioned second, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is ten point oh two, resolution authorizing membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, Superintendent Smith, you have the floor?
Yes, Madam President, we almost got ourselves in a, um, situation several years ago where, uh, Wenton Woods wasn't in the league and, um, people thought that they weren't in a league because of the OHSAA. The OHSAA and the league are two separate entities. And, uh, the board made a recommendation, at least a member of the board made a recommendation to not be part of the OHSAA. It would behoove you to always be part of the OHSAA, otherwise you cannot participate in any tournaments because the tournaments are not school tournaments, they're sponsored by the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Every basketball, soccer, football, every tournament is sponsored by them. Now, you can say I don't wanna be in, but if you're not in, you're not in any of them. So the board always has to be very cautious about, uh, accepting, um, membership into the Ohio High School Athletic Association. The other part about membership, um, it clearly says that, uh, what the GPA that you need to have in order to be in it. However, uh, one of the things that we did several years ago with Dr. Johnson's lead is we raised the, uh, GPA to participate in athletics higher than what the, uh, state, uh, says the, uh, the recommendation is. The state says you only need a one point oh to participate, and we thought that that would never get our kids to the next level. So since we've raised the GPA, uh, more kids are going to college and graduating from college than ever before, as far as the athletics is concerned. So the recommendations to approve the resolution authorizing membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as presented.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, it's been motioned second, any questions or discussions?
Yeah, board, and please understand, this is only for students in grade seven through twelve. All right.
That was gonna be my statement.
Yep.
Any other?
And the other o- observation I think we should make clear is that being in a league is totally different than being part of the Ohio High School Athletic Association, it's two different entities.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
No.
Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, call for it.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh three, second read for revised board policies.
Second read, all right, this is the third read, folks.
Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Second read, conflicts of interest, and that's policy zero full one four one point two. Third grade reading guarantee, uh, revised policy twenty-six, twenty-three point zero two. Professional staff employment of personnel for co-curricular activities, and that's policy thirty-one, twenty point zero eight. And revised policy of classified staff employment of personnel for co-curricular activities, that's policy forty-one, twenty point zero eight. And intra-district open enrollment, fifty-one, thirteen point zero one, and fifty-three, twenty students immunization.
Thank you. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I move to approve the second read of the revised board policies as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman.
I'll second.
The motion is second, thank you, Ms. Knighton. Any discussion?
I have one question on policy, um, five, one, one, three point oh one, the intra-district open enrollment, like, everything is
Striked out.
Striked out, so do we not have a policy?
Yeah, we do.
Is there a new policy?
So if you look at the green section, Doc, Dr. Johnson, uh, G, it speaks about, inasmuch as the educational program for each grade level is housed in only one building, the Board of Education does not believe that the requirement to provide for open enrollment at each grade level is applicable to this district. However, should anytime in the future, an educational program at any grade level be made available at more than one location, the board shall establish a policy, that was the only thing we needed to change, because everything else was just the boilerplate operations. Um, Ms. Wilson, you wanna say something on that?
Yeah, uh, when we had grade level buildings, uh, students were able to, um, no, they didn't like.
One building, they could go to another one, I see the difference, okay.
Now we just have, um, you know, one camp, two camps.
Right.
There's no choice.
Yeah, and we only really had it in primary, north and south, we.
Well, a long time ago, in that policy.
Cameron Park, and we had.
Dating myself, but, a long time ago, uh, students could say, I want, I want this school and not that school. Um, but as we've consolidated, now there's no option, everyone goes to the same school regardless of, um.
Yes, I get it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay.
I, I did just have a question, thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, about the immunization policy, of course, I would pick that one.
Okay.
Really, so, not so much a comment, but just a statement that it is important for the public health of all of our students and employees that we have policies regarding immunizations, and the state law mandates certain immunizations for students, and there's exceptions, um, to that. So I wanted to just make sure that the public was aware, um, and this immunization policy five, three, two, oh, speaks to that. So, that's it.
Very good.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. That motion carries unanimously, thank you. The vote carries unanimously, sorry about that. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh one legislative reports, Dr. Johnson, you have the floor?
All right, um, I did send the full legislative report to, uh, everyone via email, uh, this afternoon. There's just a few things that I thought that were noteworthy of, uh, calling our attention to. Um, the ACLU announced plans to challenge the ban on transgender care. Uh, it just talked about less than a week after the Senate completed the veto override of the controversial legislation involving transgender Ohioans. One group announced plans for the legal, uh, challenge. The ACLU of Ohio said that the lawsuit is in the works over a measurement, it's this House Bill sixty-eight to ban gender-related care for transgender youth and prohibit transgender girls from playing on women's sports teams. The case is currently before the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals. Focus, uh, for this particular bill, the House and Senate, uh, veto override, uh, prohibits the gender-affirming care for minors and to enact the Save the Women's Sports Act, so that's kinda where they were trying to get to. The bill is in the Ohio, um, uh, House and will become law ninety days after the Senate votes the override unless the court steps in. Uh, another issue was bus safety, school bus safety, to require the occupants to wear, uh, seat belts or safety devices like seat belts, uh, within the next five years, and after the hearings, uh, from experts, hearing from bus drivers, looking at the data and the lack of data from states that mandated the seat belts, uh, and listening to school districts who have tried, um, the pilot programs on their buses, um, it was stated that, uh, this may not be the most effective use of government resources. The estimated cost they set was nineteen thousand dollars per bus to, uh, retrofit the, uh, buses, um, which led to a lot of members declining to recommend this installation, and there was also discussion on enhancing penalties for motorists, um, who violate traffic laws in school safety zones and around buses while crea, and creating the grant program to allow school, uh, districts to pay for, uh, bus safety upgrades. So sometimes, you know, you think you're only just for one thing, and there's several things wrapped up in it, and that was kinda one of those things. Also concerning school safety was Senate Bill one twelve, which was talking about school buildings to comply with national, uh, life safety standards, and, um, the name of this act would be Ohio Childhood Safety Act, and it is, uh, being continued from December. The next, uh, thing of interest was, um, I found it interesting because it was only for four thousand people, but, um, state funds, um, they said millions for child eye exams. Um, the fact that we have our, um, you know, uh, health center there, it would still affect us, I believe. The state announced that it has funded the Child's, uh, Child's Vision Initiative to cover the cost of about four thousand comprehensive eye exams and glasses to Ohioans K through twelve students not currently receiving vision care, so, um, I don't know, four thousand doesn't sound like it's gonna cover a lot of people, but it is there, Governor Dewine did make a statement that clear vision is so very important for student success as our children's progress through school and learn to read, and that he wants all Ohio children to have the opportunity to live up to their God-given potential, and this program will make a significant difference in the lives of children whose families are otherwise unable to access vision care. Um, that leads us into talking about, uh, living up to your God-given potential. The Science of Reading Program that, uh, Governor Dewine wanted to institute, and there is a lawsuit now sitting in the magistrate for an injunction hearing, the Reading Recovery Council of North America sued in October over the provisions, this was House Bill thirty-three, that, um, bar the three Q instructional method, uh, and require only the materials aligned with what is being called the Science of Reading. And the three Q system, uh, of approach to foundational, uh, learning to read is the systemic, uh, uh, syntax or grammatical features and the, uh, graphic phonics way patterns of learning to read, so this lawsuit asserts that bill standards are too ambiguous and unclear, and it also refers, uh, references, uh, challenges to the new K twelve governance over House Bill thirty-three, um, as it relates to the Science of Reading, so stay tuned.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I'm gonna send the board, um, states that have already adopted it.
Mm-hmm.
And I know Ohio is trying to transition, but many states have already adopted the Science of Reading.
Okay.
And, um, it, it's out there as a, as a political, um, filibuster.
That's what I kinda got from it, it was more of a political poll than anything, but it's something that will affect us academically, so we need to.
Yeah, people wanna go back to the phonemic awareness and, and use that as the, as the guideline. But they're saying in order for our kids to be more efficient, the Science of Reading would be the best platform to not just teach me the word, but what it means, and then how I could use it in a variety of sentences and.
Right, and I think the reason I thought this got kinda political, cause I also read something about the fact that the lawsuit, uh, kinda asserts that it wrongly strips the Board of Education from, so you know, you start getting all these Boards of Education all worked up, that their rights are being, you know, stripped from them to determine what is being taught or how, then you got a whole different kind of argument, uh, going on. There's also, uh, House bills out there, uh, around social studies and the development of social studies academic standards, um, that's House Bill one oh three and, uh, one seventy-one, and, um, you know, along with the Science of Reading, we still are looking at, um, the House Bill one seventeen, uh, that's regarding reading to eliminate the retention under the third grade reading guarantee, to expand the grades for, um, which intensive reading intervention is provided, and, uh, expand the inclusion of phonics in the learning standard, so.
So years, years ago, Doc, when, um, the state came up with the, the idea that says they're not going to evaluate, uh, social studies, social studies would not be on standardized tests.
That's right.
Well, what do people do? They stop teaching it.
Yes, exactly.
And then all of a sudden, it gets to the high school level and people don't, uh, the students don't have any frame of reference of any political conversations as it relates to US history and government, then it became a storm.
And plus, that's part of the graduation requirements, that they had that, and they haven't had any, you know.
And, and the state, the state, the state, the state didn't say, don't teach it, the state says, we won't count it. Which means they were saying, don't teach it.
Well, and then people were so worked up about test scores, so they spent that time doing other things, you know, it just. Yeah, teaching to the test, you know, so. Um, just a couple of more, uh, the, uh, House Bill one eighty-three with regards to bathrooms, uh, facilities regarding single-sex bathrooms access in primary and secondary schools and, uh, institutions of higher education. And, um, I think, Mr. Smith, you brought this one up last, uh, last meeting about the student incentives, basically, uh, it's, it's being viewed, uh, as paying students to come to school, but they're calling it student incentives, House Bill three forty-eight to establish a pilot program to increase student attendance and graduation rate, kinda offering them financial awards and incentives.
So, so here's the glitch, they're saying that, um, we should incentivize kids to come to school, but it doesn't specify that you should incentivize them to do well.
Yes, just to show up.
It's an attendance factor, so they assume that if you come, you'll do great. Well, I don't know about you guys, but when I was teaching, I had some kids that came every day.
Hello.
And there are times where I, I just wanted to say, you know, it's okay for you to miss a couple of days every now and then because of what you're creating in my classroom, I don't know if anybody else ever had that, but this kid never misses. So he would've re, he would've received the stipend.
He would've received the top award for showing up, but not passing the class, so. Um, that's, that's it, those are the, those are the last, uh, things that I had, uh, and everything else, you guys got the full report. Um, I just thought that those were things that were worth noting and highlighting for the legislative report, so that's the end of my legislative report.
Thank you for such a comprehensive report, I think this is just a reminder for all of us to pay attention to who you vote into offices, I know that we tell people to vote, but pay attention to what they do when they get there, because some of these bills, you know, they may not be what you would want them for your students, um, and it gets a little scary.
But President Bryant, the other thing is, you should watch their behavior prior to them running for the election. Watch to see what kinda person is, because you can easily jump ship and say, I want this political affiliation, but what were you doing prior to?
Yeah, and our business is children, and we want them to be educated and become protective citizens. Yeah, interesting, thank you, Dr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda.
Can I give a report?
Yes.
I was gonna do board motions.
Oh.
Board reports.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Um, so before you do, Mr. Spielman, so, um, next item mentioned is eleven point oh two, the Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report. And board, I know that was sent to each one of them?
Mr. Birdie sent it to them?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Ms. Bryant, who sent out that report?
Oh, Mr. Birdie, Jeff Birdie sent that report out.
I didn't get a copy of the report, I usually do.
Wilson.
But I'll, I'll, I can get it.
Great. So board, we need to entertain a motion. Mr. Spielman, did you wanna make that motion?
I will, in regard to accepting the report from. Um, I move the, approve the report on the, uh, Great Oaks Career Technical Center dated, uh, yeah, the technical center report as presented.
I'll second.
All right, it has been motioned in second, any questions or any discussion? I did wanna highlight a couple of things on this report. Sorry, just pull that up real quick, there were a couple of things that were on here that were. Just wanna have it up, hold on. So I'm just trying to get the right one. My apologies.
He's what?
No problem.
He sent the report to everyone.
Yeah, I got it, but I.
I was trying, it's not pulling up, my apologies.
I was trying to see if I could get it.
I was gonna try to pull up the report, there were a couple of things that we had, a couple of students that were highlighted. But unfortunately, when I keep, I'm pulling up everything but that document.
And those are the ones that I need, so that I, when I see the students, when they come on campus to visit or whatever, I can. And those are the ones that I need so that I, when I see the students, when they come on campus to visit or whatever, I can kind of give them kudos.
Okay, great. So it's been seconded, motioned.
Thank you.
Seconded, motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, can you call for the vote?
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously.
I've never seen it, I can't, I can't see it yet.
Okay, it's not just me, I was.
No, I, I didn't send it to my other email.
The next item on the agenda is twelve point oh one, board motions and recommendations. Any additional motions?
I, I don't, um, I had talked to you about my visiting the Green Hills Council. Um, and I went, just so the rest of the board knows, I attended their council meeting on January twenty-third and just introduced myself as one of the two Green Hills reps and Deborah Bryant as being the other one. And, um, introduced ourselves, uh, to the council and they appointed Maria Walther as the council's representative back to the board. And so I told her at some ti- point in the future, we would get together for coffee.
Perfect, thank you so much, Mr. Spielman, for that. Anything else? Nope, okay. Next item on the agenda is thirteen point oh one, comments from members of the board. Education Superintendent, Treasurer. Who would like to go first?
Nothing, thank you.
I can go. Um, I just want to, um, as usual, just say how much of a incredible honor and pu- and privilege and pleasure it is, um, to serve on this board. Uh, just the beginning of this meeting to see all of the talent and the amazing families, um, that we have represented in this room, um, is just inspiring. And so, uh, it's just amazing to be a part of that. Um, I will also thank the community, um, the teachers, uh, groups and things. We have been hearing a lot of really great feedback, uh, as we've been engaged in our superintendent search. Uh, we are well on our way, uh, in that process. Just want to thank everybody for continuing to contribute your thoughts, um, opinions, things like that. We are definitely hearing them, uh, we are definitely incorporating them, um, and things like that. Uh, we have began our process and, um, value your opinions, so continue to share those, uh, the right way. Um, so I will say, we appreciate having them sent professionally through email, um, as you should, um, Facebook and things like that. Uh, we don't necessarily access as much, um, so that's not the best way to reach out. The best way probably is, is we all have Wittenwood's email addresses, um, and, and usually they go to our president and she'll filter and share them through us, uh, through the rest, with the rest of us. So, um, that has been very helpful, um, to hear, um, from our various stakeholders. So I just appreciate you all taking the time to do that. Um, and want to continue to say thank you for allowing us to be in the seats to, um, lead this great school district, so.
Thank you, Ms. Knighton.
All right. Just looking that way. Let's just go in the row. Okay, I'd like to, uh, echo those sentiments and also offer a special congratulations to all of our students and award recognition recipients this evening. It was amazing to hear all of the good things that's going on in this school district. And we always talk about telling our own story and that's how we tell our own story is to, you know, uh, highlight those, those, uh, events and those things that the students are doing that are in excellence. Um, also, thank you to the Green Hills Police Department, um, for, uh, their support of our district, albeit that he wasn't here tonight. We'll recognize him again next meeting. And to Ms. Carol Becky Youngs for pouring into our students on so many different levels. And she's probably not going to remember this, but my oldest daughter who graduated in nineteen ninety-five, she was involved in shaping her too. So she's been here for a while. Um, so she was involved in, um, uh, shaping her as well, uh, but, uh, she probably won't remember that. But, you know, I look different, she looks the same, you know? But anyway, um, I'd also like to say thank you to our Teachers of the Month, our Teacher of the Month, and to those community members who support the athletes with their weekly, uh, donations of, uh, snacks. We really appreciate the dedication and the support of our district. Uh, as an educator myself, I'll always say this, around this time of year, if your child is thinking about going to college, then they need to think about filling out the FAFSA.
If it's available.
The, eh, the, the free application for federal student aid. And sometimes it's a little clunky, but I hear that it's getting easier to fill out.
Yes.
The form and the process, the app is getting a little easier, whether it is or not. Struggle through it, because you need to get that in before you can get any money at all. You know, whether it's student loans, whether it's grants, whether it's scholarships. So I just want to encourage everybody to do that. Um, I would not be sitting in the seat, uh, with the help, without the help of having completed a FAFSA myself several, several, several years ago. So, um, it's worth doing, worth taking the time to do it. Uh, we do have, uh, several events that, uh, are on the docket and I have them all listed, but there's only four I'm going to highlight. Um, as of tomorrow, as a matter of fact, the middle school and high school orchestra concert will be going on. Um, and, uh, so they always do a pretty good job, so come out and support. Um, on, uh, March the seventh, uh, our community engagement coordinator already talked about the, um, uh, showcase of excellence that's going to be going on. We want you to come out and support that. Um, also, uh, we have, uh, March the fourteenth is the other showcase of excellence, uh, for grade seven through twelve. And, uh, we also have spring break in March. So, um, I don't know about you, but I'm ready for a break. That's the way educators go, right? We can't wait for school to start, we can't wait to get that week off. I don't know what it is. It just is, we love what we do, but that week off, spring break is coming up, March the eighteenth through Friday, March the twenty-second. Um, and as always, we want to thank our district leadership team, Superintendent Smith, the De- Directors of Teaching and Learning, the executive team, Mr. Seymour, and the Treasurer's Office team, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, custodians, everything, everyone who touches the lives of our students. We want to, um, thank them and we can't impress upon you enough how much we appreciate what you, uh, do for us. And as, uh, Ms. Knighton said, we're in the, uh, transition and the process of interviewing for our next superintendent. And I can only speak for myself to say that I feel like Superintendent Smith has, um, set the wheels in motion with the initiatives that he has put in place and, uh, the partnerships that he has put in place and the work that he has done. So we are, um, you know, really taking our time to look at the, uh, the, the process and the, uh, applicants, um, because he has put a lot of wheels in motion from, uh, partnerships with Miami to Mercy Health, to, you know, the, um, ECC Conference. There's just so mu- so many things, so we're looking for the right person and know that those of you who put us in office to put us in these seats, that we do not take that job lightly. And so we are going to do our very level best to, uh, present you with a, um, superintendent that could do the same thing moving forward, so. Um, that's all I have. Finally, just thank you for, um, you know, it doesn't seem like thank you is ever really quite enough from the five of us, but, um, that's really what we have and it really comes from the heart, that we really appreciate what you do for our students in this district. Mr. Spielman?
Thank you, you've covered.
Always do.
I, I would like to thank our teachers. Um, we, we had, uh, one of the teachers recognized tonight, but also an- another teacher that pours into students in a basketball, in a sports coaching position. And, um, we di- we just want to thank you for what you do. Um, and, and I'm, I'm amazed at the artwork that I've seen tonight. Um, I go to the D, uh, to the, um, DAP Senior Show every year, so it's architects, it's fine arts, um, community planning, interior design, and that stuff was incredible.
Yes.
Um, I, someday we're going to see some of those in the senior show down at DAP if they choose to go to UC. Um, just some real quality artwork there and the, the inspiration and the talks behind it were just really insightful and inspiring. Um, so, and I'd just like to thank the community for this opportunity. Um, in regard to the superintendent position, I am, I and the rest of the board, I know we're taking a thoughtful and a thorough approach to it. Um, quite a few meetings to, to interview and, um, and we're just doing our best to be thoughtful and thorough, um, in that process. Following the process as recommended by our consultant, the Ohio State School Board Association. And, uh, just doing the best we can to get the right person, uh, for the district to continue us moving forward. So I'd like to thank you, thank the community for their support on that.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. I guess it's my turn. I'm going to try to make sure I get every name of those who were recognized. So congratulations, Michelle, Kimmy, Ariana, Gabrielle, Isaiah, Rayel, Ms. Israel, Ashley, Cora, Aisha, Naomi, Chris, and Mr. Hadeah. I want to say thank you for showing up every day and doing your best. Um, thank you, Ms. Becky Youngs, for all of those things you've done. She was my son's art teacher and I saw that artwork. Um, I also would like to say thank you so much to Skyline as well as the Quanis, because each month we get to hear about these wonderful accomplishments. But that wouldn't be possible if we didn't have great community supporters such as the Forest Park Skyline Chili, as well as the Forest Park Green Hills Quanis Club, so thank you. And I also like to say thank you for the community members who've donated their time and talent and financial resources to support the students in the Wittenwood City School District. I would also like to thank the community and stakeholders and trusting the board to make the decision in selecting the next superintendent. Your feedback is appreciated and is valuable as we move forward in our final phase of interviewing. So again, I echo, um, all of my colleagues here on the board, the sentiment, we don't do this work without you. We are here to be your voice, so thank you so much for trusting us to do that, um, and to make the decision. We heard from the key stakeholders, we appreciate all of you who were able to come out, um, and talk about what you'd like to see where we are and where we need to go. So we appreciate, um, your thoughtfulness. Just so in full transparency, the, the final interviews, um, or the next phase of interviews will happen for the superintendent candidate on March fourth. So just so you know, we are moving and we will have a final candidate by the end of next month, so.
Ms. Bryant? You mentioned the, uh, Skyline and the awards. Uh, I, I hope the community understands that, you know, it's, it's easy to say, uh, we've had a unfortunate situation and so we can't help. Skyline is actually being totally renovated because they had a massive fire and they give the awards every month. That, that's the difference in the commitment, because they could easily say, "We had a fire, we can't do it." They, they do it every single month, and so that's the commitment. Uh, the kids understand tragedy and they understand commitment. And so when you can bring it together, I think it just kind of tells a lot about what the community member is and who they are. And that's why we, uh, use that, that restaurant as often as we can.
Thank you, and again, thank you. That is all.
I wanted to say one thing, one other thing, speaking of that artwork, um, there's a, um, a curator at the Art Museum, Dr. Anum Mitri. And, uh, she does a thing called learning to look when you look at art.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, sometimes I look at these pictures and I'm like, I'm trying to interject that learning to look, you know, with the, you know, you look with the naked eye, like, what do you see just the picture? And then you look again and say, what, what, what story were they trying to tell? So there, some of this art is just so intricate and I'm not even sure sometimes whether the students know what is being projected out of them, you know? It's, it's something that's buried so deep inside of them that it's coming out and I'm just not even sure. So it's just really wonderful, wonderful to see. And, um, I'm so glad we brought that piece back.
Yeah.
Because, um, you know, I, I was asking, uh, Mrs. Bryant, uh, when they were presenting, I'm like, what grade are these students in? This is amazing, this is amazing work, because it rivals some of the stuff that you walk through and see at the art museum.
But, but they look like artists.
They look, well, they do. They look like artists and their work looks like art, art, true artwork, you know? So I just wanted to interject that, that there is a whole process that, uh, educators go through, um, through the, um, art museum and it's called the learning to look process and you just learn to, so it, it's, it's a leadership thing where they kind of decide so that you don't just look at your organization and say, "This is what I see, this is what I got to fix." You learn to look inside, what else is going on? Doctors go through this program, a lot of different educators go through this program with Dr. Anum Mitri, so. When I look at that art, I see.
Yeah, but I'm also happy that the students, you know, you, you know, with COVID and all the stuff that we've dealt with, students and self-esteem becomes a very integral thing.
Mm-hmm.
And these kids must believe in themselves, they're drawing themselves.
Oh, yes.
That's a powerful piece, because you don't draw yourself if you don't have the confidence in yourself.
Right, yeah, yes, absolutely. I just needed to say that, because I, I, when I look at that art, I, I'm, I'm pretty amazed at it, I'm pretty amazed.
I'd say hats off to the parents too, because you've, they're raising such wonderful human beings, um, for them to be here and the pride in their faces to see everything that they've accomplished is.
Huge.
It was a, it was, it was a Kleenex moment, I'll tell you that right there. It really was, very proud of that. But last but not least, I'd like to thank Wittenwood's Community Media for all that you do, for showing up and recording our meetings so everyone at home can see this presentation from the board and re-watch it. So, thank you. The next item on the agenda is fourteen point oh one, is there a need, a motion to go into closed session?
Yes.
I would like, I would like to make a motion, um, to go into executive session to consider the sale of property.
Great, it's been motioned, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, it's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, can you call the vote?
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. We are going into executive session, there will be no other businesses, um, or agenda items after that. So, thank you.